Time is now 5:34 and I call this Board Committee Meeting to order. Today is June 13th, 2017. Item number two, Student Recognitions. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have several student recognitions this evening and Mr. Rovleto will be walking us through those. So we're so proud of our students.
Alright, good afternoon Board. Tonight, we want to start off by recognizing a recent Weslaco High School, Weslaco East High School graduate who not only represented his school but also our district at the national level. Kaler Fajardo, who is right here, you can please stand up, sir, and step right up. Kaler Fajardo just returned from the National Business Professionals of America Conference where he won second place in Advanced Accounting. Kaler qualified to Nationals after placing second at state. He was also the District and Regional Champion. Kaler was also the BPA Chapter One President. Kaler also participated in UIL Accounting, winning first place at all seven Invitational meets and placing second at the Regional and District meets. When he wasn't busy competing, Kaler was also a member of the Wildcats football team for four years and also took part in the golf team. Let's have a big hand here for Kaler Fajardo. We would also like to recognize his sponsor Sylvia Cardenas. If she's here, could she please stand and be recognized? And we also want to congratulate his parents, Kaler Fajardo and Myrna Fajardo. Would you like to take some more pictures? Need to stand up, please, sir. Thank you, good job.
Congratulations.
Okay, now let's move on. Up next, we're going to move on to the girls' track team. If the girls' track team is here, which I think they are, from Weslaco High School, can they please come out to be recognized? How about a big hand for the girls' track team? Most of our girls are here, not all of them, so if I say your name, can you please just step forward so you can be recognized when I do call your name? The Lady Panthers won the District Championship for the sixth year in a row and an Area Championship for the fifth year in a row. The team members, go ahead, how about a big hand for them? Team members are Jasmine Barrios, Jaclyn Moreno, Jaclyn Moreno, Jaclyn Douglas. We also have Lisa Marie Sanchez. Up next, we have Jeanette Villanueva, is she here? We have Gloria Martinez, who was an Area Qualifier. She was an Area Qualifier in the 3200 meter run and the 1600 meter run. We also have Gabriela Garza, Area and Regional Qualifier in the Pole Vault. And Eva Perez, District Champion and Area Qualifier. She was a District Champion and Area Qualifier in the 4x400 relay, Area Qualifier in the Pole Vault as well. Elia Garza, District Champion, Area and Regional Qualifier in the 800 meter run and a Regional Qualifier in the 4x400 meter run. We have Sierra Gonzalez. Sierra was a District Champion and Area and Regional Qualifier in the Discus. Jenna Martinez, District Runner-Up in the 4x100 meter relay and District and Area Champion and Regional Qualifier in the 4x200 relay. Chantel Barrera, she is a District and Area Champion in the 4x100 meter relay, District and Area Champion, Regional Qualifier in the 4x200 meter relay and a Regional Qualifier in the 4x400 meter relay. We also have Sidney Salinas, she is a District, Area Champion, Regional Qualifier in the Pole Vault, District Runner-Up, Area Champion and Regional Qualifier in the 4x100 and a District and Area Champion and Regional Qualifier in the 4x200 meter relay. Elida Hernandez. Elida, Area Champion, Regional Qualifier in the 4x200 relay, District Champion, Area and Regional Qualifier in the 4x400 relay. Eleanor is a District Champion, Area Champion, Regional Qualifier in the Long Jump, District Champion, Area Qualifier in the High Jump, District Champion, Area Champion, Regional Qualifier in the 400 meter dash, Area Qualifier in the 200 meter dash, Area Champion, Regional Qualifier in the 4x100 meter dash, District Champion, Area and Regional Qualifier in the 4x400 meter relay. Brianna Gonzalez, Area Qualifier in the Shot Put, Area Champion, Regional Champion and State Qualifier in the Discus. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? We also like to recognize head coach Pablo Amaguer. And we'd also like to recognize his assistants Liliana Skolitski, Jaime Cavassos, Billy Rivera, Joshua Cantu and Sidney Smith. We also would like to recognize tonight our boys varsity track members who qualified for state. We have John Zapata in the Pole Vault event. And we also have Mr. Joe Solis in the 100 meter and 400 meter wheelchair division. And their head coach is Gus Cabrera. How about a big hand for our track athletes? Thank you very much, y'all can exit this way.
Their coaches?
Their coaches were recognized, yes. The coaches, Gus Cabrera once again and Pablo Amaguer.
He's in the back.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alright, let's bring out the Weslaco High School softball team. No, I know there's more. Can't just move with four players. Alright, how about a big hand for the girls' softball team as they enter the building? We want to congratulate the Weslaco High softball team for winning, for a great season. The Lady Panthers finished the season with a 29-5 overall record. They went 13-1 in 32-6A district play. The softball team made history again this year, becoming the first outright District Champion in Weslaco High School history. The team went on to capture the Bi-District Championship, Area Championship, Regional Quarterfinal Championship and were Regional Semi-finalists. We would like to recognize them. And ladies, if you are here, which I think most of you guys are, just please step forward so we could recognize you. We have Sidney Sepeda, Michaela Trevino, Ariel Amador, Jada Lopez, Amaya Salinas, Abigail Luna, Jaylene Longoria, Iliana Trujillo. Winning individual distinctions in 32-6A are Helen Gonzalez, Honorable Mention Designated Hitter, Ashley Sada, Honorable Mention Pitcher. She's a right-handed. We have Gabriela Rivera, Second Team First Baseman. Laura Lynn Deanda, First Team Second Baseman. Jenny Yan, First Team Third Baseman. Charlene Deanda, First Team Center Field. Madelyn Ibada, First Team Left Fielder. Amberly Barrera, First Team Right Fielder. Alyssa Escamilla, Offensive Player of the Year. We have Taylor Tofoya, First Team Pitcher and All-Area Pitcher of the Year. And we have Audrey Escamilla, Defensive Player of the Year, All-Area Offensive Player of the Year and All-Vale Player of the Year in Softball. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? We would also like to recognize the coaching staff, Head Coach Mario Rodriguez with assistants Melissa Banda, Dylan DeLeon, Cruz Morales, Josie Ramirez and Mario Lasso. Big hand for the coaches. Alright, congratulations to the girls' softball team. Thank you, girls.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we'd like to recognize some of our talented singers and musicians here at WISD. If they can please come out to be recognized and how about a big hand for these students? Our choir and our band students competed and won bronze, silver and gold medals in the 2017 Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Choir members from Weslaco High School are, and students if you're here, can you please step forward to be recognized? We have Taylor Tofoya, who received, Taylor received a Division Two Excellence or Excellent Rating on an Ensemble and winning silver medal as well. Receiving Division One Superior Ratings on Solos and Gold Medals, Gold Medals are Maryanne Bosita and Elijah Tofoya. The Weslaco Choir Director is Juan Aguilar, if he's here, can he please stand and be Let's recognize some band members now. Weslaco High School Band Members receiving Division Two Ratings on Solos and Silver Medals are Jeric Garcia, Jonathan Jimenez, Brian Lowe and Aaron Peña. I don't think they're here today. Weslaco High School Band Director Rodrigo Lial, how about a big hand for him? Now Weslaco East High School Band Members receiving Division One Ratings on Ensemble and taking home bronze medals are Aissa Garcia, we have Nubia Madrigal, Jackie Salas. We also have Alyssa Aguilar, who won both silver and bronze medals. Winning silver medals are Joshua Chares, we have Eugino Lopez, and we have Victoria And we have two gold medalists, Joey Ayala and Ernesto Casas. And if their band director, the band director's here, Armando Cuero, if he can please stand and be recognized? If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized tonight as well? Thank you very much, students, and congratulations, good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job, good job. A couple of words to the parents, the coaches, the students, the teachers, the principals, everybody here, our Board of Trustees, Cabinet, this is the accomplishments that we achieve in Weslaco ISD in the field, academics and fine arts. So thank you so much for the opportunity and everybody, thank you for the teamwork in making this happen for kids. Kids, students, we're so proud of you.
Thank you all. Our next item is adjournment. And that's it. We'll be back in 10 minutes for the regular board meeting and we invite the public to stay. Time is 6:04. Today's date is June 13th, 2017. Call this Board, Regular Board Meeting, Weslaco ISD School of Trustees to order. Item number two, Establishment of a Quorum. Let the record reflect, we have a full quorum with the exception of Dr. Rivera, which will be joining us shortly. Item number three, Opening Prayer, Dr. Canales.
For opening prayer, we do have the invocation to be delivered by Mr. Elias Trevino, our Director of Bilingual ESL Programs.
You'd be so kind to bow your heads, let's pray. Father, we just thank you, Lord, for your goodness, your mercy, Lord, your everlasting kindness in our lives. We thank you for your faithfulness, Lord, that goes above and beyond our understanding. We thank you for your presence in this place where your word declares that where there are two or three gathered in your name, you are there, so I know that you are here. Father, we just ask you right now that you continue to give our superintendent and our school board members the wisdom and the understanding to make decisions, Lord, that honor you. It's not about us, it's all about honoring you. Father, at this time, we also ask you for all of our staff members, our students, during this time of the summer, that you will, that protect them, that your hand may be upon them, so that they may all be able to return safely. Father, we'll be very careful to give you the glory and the honor in all that we do for your word tells us very clearly, whether we do anything in word or in action, it must be done to honor you. Thank you, Lord God, for allowing us to complete another year of great successes and we know, Lord God, this new year that we will begin shortly, that it will be of greater victory and it's all about you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, beautiful prayer. Item number four is Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, Dr. Canales.
Tonight, we have Coach Oscar Riojas, who will deliver the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, Awards and Recognizations, which we already went through that in an earlier workshop. Is there any other awards or recognitions that we have to go through? Carlos? We're done. Okay. Item number six, Public Comments. We had two people sign up and we will go ahead and call the first one up, which is Yolanda Ms. Hernandez, thank you for coming up. I have to read you something before you go and I know it sounds a little tough, but I just have to read it to everybody before they start talking. You are to address matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. Will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Would you please, your name and your address and continue, you have five minutes.
My name is Yolanda Hernandez and I live at 512 Orchard Court here in Weslaco.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, Members of the Board and Dr. Canales. Around this date, 43 years ago, Mario and I graduated from Texas A&amp;I in Kingsville. We were 20 years old and were interviewing for teaching positions. We were ready to sign with Stafford Municipal School District near Houston, who was in need of bilingual teachers, and decided to wait and attend our last interview of the day, which was with Weslaco ISD, just to see what they had to say. At that time, the HR Director was Mr. Dewey Baker and his sincerity impressed us so much that we decided to go with Weslaco ISD instead. The only thing he said that made an impact was, "The children of Weslaco need you." That simple phrase made a tremendous impression on both of us and we decided to give Weslaco ISD a try. Different people tried to discourage us because apparently at that time Weslaco ISD was struggling. We were about to lose accreditation and federal funding, but then that same year, Mr. Ann Tony Rico was hired to become the Superintendent of Weslaco ISD. He was homegrown and was able to make tremendous changes and eventually became the first ever Superintendent of the Year for the State of Texas. Mario and I like to think that we were part of that positive change. I had many mentors in Weslaco ISD that made an impact in my life and career. Mr. Rico was one of those. He was a listener and made you feel like you were the most important member of Weslaco ISD when you spoke to him. He led by example and I always felt he truly cared about the children of Weslaco ISD. Dr. Richard Wubena and Lee Bannister were a huge part of that positive change and taught me how to teach and become the best teacher I could be. Dr. Amparo Cardenas was a major reason why we became administrators, by signing us up and encouraging us to attend a special master's program at Stephen F. Austin State University, which was trying to ensure there were more Hispanic administrators in Texas. Dr. Janice Wiley was, always had her act together and kept Weslaco ISD ahead of the game. She was a natural leader and I admired her tremendously. She cared enough to talk me into seeing a doctor, which eventually led to my colon cancer diagnosis. She is my hero. Dr. Richard Rivera allowed me to become Principal at Ann Tony Rico. He taught me that everything we did was always for and about the students. And to this day, whenever I have to make difficult decisions, I always think about that. Those words always provided the guidance to make things just a little easier. Mr. Rudy Silva taught me how to be organized. He shared his many ideas on organization and why it is vital to our position. Mrs. Gloria Sines showed me how to be a positive member of a team. I truly enjoyed the time Mrs. Sines, Ms. Cuadra and I spent working together at Airport Elementary. Mr. Roman Nieto taught me not to allow people to push me into making rash decisions. He always said, "When you're upset about something, give yourself two days. If after that time you still want to address that situation, go right ahead. Many times, the extra thinking time will clear your mind and help you not make rash decisions." Sue Peterson taught me the importance of monitoring classrooms by making me do many, many, many walkthroughs. Dr. Canales, you have been a breath of fresh air for this district. Your innovative ideas and different ways you handle situations is refreshing. It has been a privilege and an honor to work side by side with my Rico family for 19 years, a place where like Dr. Rivera taught me, kids come first. We have been through many extreme situations together and have prevailed through them all. Thank you Rico staff for sharing your many gifts with me and the children of Rico. A special thanks goes to my loyal and extremely competent and dedicated secretary, Yvette Contreras. She always seemed to read my mind and be one step ahead of all of us. You always took care of me and will always hold a very special place in my heart. To my wonderful family, I know it was difficult to share both your mom and dad with the children of Weslaco ISD, but we always managed to be together and make our special time the best it could be. We always try to support you in all of your endeavors and make you feel just as important. We are very proud of each of you and all you have accomplished. I love you very much. Mario, you taught me so much and put up with my tantrums. You always listened to my insanity, calmed me down and guided me in the right direction. Thank you for being you. Last but not least, I would like to thank God for giving me the opportunity to serve Him by serving the children of Weslaco ISD. I always felt you right behind me, pushing me along. Board Members, very soon now, you will select my successor. I know that you understand the importance and impact your decision will make. I encourage you to select a person who first and foremost will make connections with the students and parents and who is there to ensure student success. Also, look for someone who is knowledgeable about curriculum, who has experience working with young children and who is there for the right reasons. Because Rico Elementary is a large campus, select someone who has the fortitude and stamina to enjoy their position. It has been a great honor and a privilege to serve Weslaco ISD to the best of my capacity. Thank you for giving me that very special opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. I would like to invite you back up here because as a Board, we would like to have a picture with you, if you'd kindly come up. There will be some big shoes to fill over at Rico and we thank you for your 25 years of service here in Weslaco and we will miss you.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, but 25 as a principal?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. I got it all wrong. I apologize for that, but thank you. You know, but you are free to come back whenever you want to and volunteer at any school you want to. Okay, moving on to our next, Monica Escamilla. Monica, before you start, I'm gonna read something to you.
Yes.
You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. Will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting. Now let me also add that during public comments, we can Now let me also add that during public comments, we cannot answer back to you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so if there's questions and you're looking to us to answer, we're not allowed to comment back. You can come back and talk to the superintendent or something like that, but just that you know, in case you were not aware of that.
Yes.
Okay, you have five minutes and start with your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Monica Escamia and today I'm speaking not only as a former Weslaco High School alumni, but as a concerned sister and aunt to students who attend the Weslaco ISD school system. Our current school administration encourages students to bring money for scholarship programs with hopes of receiving as graduating seniors. But that is simply not the case. Fourteen schools awarded scholarships to twenty-one students who were related to staff or administration and some were even given more than one scholarship from campuses that they actually didn't even attend. My sister was ranked top twenty-five in her class and she was very confident in all her qualifications. She applied for eighteen different scholarships and she didn't receive not even one. She didn't have a fair chance. Weslaco ISD promotes that it is the right choice for its students. But who exactly is it the right choice for? The actions you take as school board members show our students that hard work and perseverance does not hold any merit if you're not related to anyone that works for the district or sits on the school board itself. Me personally, I also work in education and I see that we should give our children a fighting chance and it should be equal for them to also have that same ability to get any kind of assistance or any kind of scholarship, whether they're related to somebody or not. So that's my concern. For you, as someone that also attended this school and for my sisters and for anyone else that's related to me and for them that are growing up and have to deal with this as well. So that's mostly my concern. So I thank you for listening and I hope that this does get some kind of fix or it's worked on, but thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, superintendent's report. Dr. Canales.
Good evening. We have several items to report, beginning with preliminary star performance data, followed by enrollment and average daily attendance and then insurance. Mrs. Sue Peterson will be delivering the preliminary star performance data for the data that we do have to date for 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Canales and members of the board. Wait till it comes up. Right now, we have our fifth and eighth grade reading and math scores and our end of course exams for the high schools. Tomorrow, we anticipate getting the remainder of the scores. So the first chart you're looking at is the fifth and eighth grade math and reading. You can see the green indicates all of the campuses who had an increase in this area. Want to call special attention to Airport Elementary, who scored at ninety in both or above. Kuechler Held had a ninety-three in reading. Gonzalez recognized for their ninety-one in math and also a twenty-point gain in fifth grade reading. Margot ninety-three in math. Memorial had a ninety-one in math. North Bridge, a ninety in math and an eleven-point gain in reading. And Sam Houston, a ninety-nine in math and a ninety-two in reading. And there are other increases also. If you look at the last three lines shaded in an orange, under math, you can see that we are at the same level of region one as an eighty-nine and above the state average of eighty-one. Moving over to the reading, we went up in reading to an eighty-three, which is one point ahead of region one and twelve points ahead of the state. So we're very proud of our increases in those areas. At the middle school level, we had increases across the board in math. Eighth grade math, we have an eight-point gain at Quayar and a seven-point gain at Bigarza. You can see that we are above the region in eighth grade math by two points and thirteen points ahead of the state. Eighth grade reading is more challenging and we're still needing some improvement there. The first batch of eighth grade reading is eighth graders who took the actual eighth grade reading test. The only campus that was able to see an increase was Quayar. They went from a sixty-nine to a seventy-one. We are at the state level in reading and we're four points behind the region. I do want to remind you, remind the board, that we do pull out our top students to take English one in eighth grade. So if we combine the English one scores, that's what that next batch of data there is at the bottom of this table. And if we add in the English one scores, we would be at eighty, which would be at the region one level. We're one of the few districts that offers English one at the eighth grade and we did have a hundred percent pass of our eighth graders that took the English one exam. Any questions on that report before I go on?
How many eighth graders are we talking about there?
There are over fifty at each campus. I think it's sixty, seventy-three. I don't have the exact number in my head, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
The next graph that you see, we're also very proud of this graph. As you know, the performance standards changed in their name. So approaches grade level used to be what's called the MET standard or passing. That's a passing test. Meets is the old, what we used to call final level two or the next level up. And then masters would be the advanced. So if you look at all of the green on this table, you can see that we had increases almost across the board in these advanced categories of meets and masters. In math, you can see all schools but two had advances in the meets and again, all but two had advances in the master. In the reading, we had about half advances in the meets and over half advancing at the masters level. So not only are more students passing, but they're passing at a higher standard. So that was another goal that the campuses were working on this past year. They do not have the state averages in there for these. We will have that in the fall when we present all of the final scores. And you can see our middle schools also in math, doing well. Reading again, we've got some gains to make in reading, but we did have some advances on the meets and masters levels. Then we go into the high schools where we have good news in the math, the Algebra I. We had increases at Weslaco High School East and Kate Early College. So increases across the board there. English one, we are struggling. Still, that test remains a challenge for our students and our teachers. So we have continued work to do there. However, I want to congratulate Kate Early College, who had a nine-point gain in their English one scores. Biology, again, Kate Early College exceeded everyone else in this category. South Palm Gardens is a little bit deceptive. They have a very small rate of students who test. It's just retesters there. So that hundred percent is fabulous, but it's a very small number of kids. And then English two, this is better news than English one. We are having more success there with the scores at Weslaco High School and Weslaco East increasing. And then US history is still a challenge. I want to say that, remember, South Palm Gardens at thirty-three percent, again, very small number of students retesting. And Kate Early College did not have that kind of drop. Last year, Kate Early College tested a large number of sophomores. They changed their course sequence. So the only students in that Kate Early College number of thirty-eight are retesters. This year, sophomores at Kate Early College are taking special topics in US history. They will take the US history test next year. So that's not a drop. It's a totally different population. And then you can see at Central Middle School, Quayar, Bigars and Mary Hoag. That is the report for our eighth graders who take Algebra I. And we only had one student who didn't pass that test. And then in English one, we had everyone passing. Last year, we had three or four students that did not pass the test, but this year, all of our eighth graders who took English one passed. So good news there. And then the next score table, rather, again, shows you the changes in the approaches, meets and masters. Not quite as good here at the elementary. Our Algebra I, we had a lot of increases in meets and masters. At the middle schools, Weslaco East and Kate Early College also had that. Weslaco High School at meets. Again, English one is an area we're struggling. And biology, we had some increases at East and at Kate Early College, you really had excellent scores in biology. And then the English two, we had increases in the meets at Weslaco High School, Weslaco East and Kate Early College. We saw very small numbers of students hitting the masters level. And then US history, again, you can see our struggle there. So we know we have work to continue and this is just the first round of scores. Again, tomorrow, we get a more comprehensive report from the state, we hope. So in your board update on Friday, you should have third, fourth, fifth grade science, writing, fourth and seventh, sixth and seventh scores. Everybody, everything should be in. Any questions? Thank you.
On page one, Ms. Peterson.
Yes, sir.
On the fifth, the fifth grade?
Yes.
I just want to commend Sam Houston. They went from ninety-seven to ninety-nine and reading eighty-nine to ninety-two. And these are very good scores for Sam Houston.
Thank you.
And at Central, on the, now this is after the second administration, right?
That is correct, yes.
And for the middle schools, I just want to commend Central in math. And their reading kind of went down, right?
Yes, yes. We need to, we need to really dig into the detailed reports when we see those for eighth grade reading.
And let me look at the high school real quick.
High school English one is the issue.
Yes.
That's our biggest issue. We also have to look at US history.
I think it stayed wide though, the English one, English two. But on the algebra, on the algebra, let's see. Well, biology, we decreased, right, from sixteen to seventeen in biology?
No, thanks to Kate Early College, overall, the district had, well, you know, it decreased by two points. Kate Early College is the only one that increased. They had a ten-point increase, but you're right, down two points overall.
Yeah, Weslaco East, both.
Yes.
And also in US history?
Yes.
Do we have facilitators working in these areas, biology and US history? Because it looks like these are low in the English. Do we have facilitators working at the high school?
At the high schools?
In the course?
Yes. And then, of course, we've got our content area strategists at central office level.
Overall, good?
Thank you. I do want to thank Claudia Allen East and Rick Flores, who helped prepare these reports for me. I did not prepare them myself.
Ms. Peterson, one question.
Yes.
On those eighth graders, English one a hundred percent, how many received the mastery level? Do you know?
It was in here and I didn't think it was reading right, so I took it out, but I'll have it when we, I may have it on Friday. Rick's rechecking that for me. And if not, for sure, we'll have it when I present in.
And along the lines that Dr. Rivera mentioned, there are several schools actually that did very well on the number of students that got masters. For example, over twenty percent, Kuechler Held, Gonzalez, Memorial, Sam Houston again. And also in reading, I think the same schools also were, several schools were over twenty percent mastery, which is Airport, Kuechler, Gonzalez again, Margot, Memorial and also on Sam Houston. So the principal did an excellent job there with those top students getting the mastery level.
To earn that A in index one, we have to have ninety, sixty, thirty across those three categories. So that's what we're shooting for.
Ms. P, we still have one strategist, right? We're still?
One strategist per content area, yes.
Per content area. Yeah, we're planning for next year, the meeting, budgeting.
Any other questions?
No, continue the great work, principals. This is really awesome to see the improvements.
Many principals are in Austin at conferences.
Yep.
Okay, for the next part of the superintendent's report, and Andres Sanchez will join me on this one, we have enrollment and ADA. So at the end of the school year, the difference for our district in terms of students compared to the previous year at the same time period was four hundred and twenty-seven students. You can see that on the second slide, you can see the difference by campus level. Three hundred and thirty-five difference at the elementary schools, sixty-eight student difference for middle schools and twenty-five for high school. Three for L, which gives a grand total of four twenty-seven. We have, our technology team has been working on research to look at where kids are going. We've identified two hundred and twenty kids, is that correct, Carlos? Two hundred and twenty, who we know left our district to go to charter schools. So we're looking at that carefully and the impact of that. Okay, so now when it comes down to our funding and ADA, we also have that for you for the year. Because of the number of migrant students that we do have in our school district, instead of looking at the average of six, six weeks, the state looks at our four highest six weeks, okay? So this is what this ADA is based on. And Andres will walk us through this one.
Members of the board, Dr. Canales. The board knows that the budget that we did for ADA was based on sixteen thousand one hundred. The current ADA for the year, after some adjustments that were done after reviewing for purposes, the final number was sixteen thousand eighty-six, which is fourteen less than we had budgeted. That, we receive about seventy-five hundred dollars in the average per ADA. So it's about a hundred and five thousand less ADA that we'll receive compared to what we budgeted.
Hundred and five thousand less?
Hundred and five thousand less, yes.
For the fourteen student difference, ADA difference?
Right, yes, right.
Okay.
Fourteen ADA.
On your budget for this year, and if you're gonna budget the same amount or higher or lower?
Sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand even, a hundred less. Being conservative, want to make sure. We're looking at increasing it and we increase it, we'll have additional funds at the end of the year, but I'd rather go a little lower than keeping it the same.
So sixteen thousand?
Yes. Last time we had sixteen, sorry, last time we had sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four at the end of the year. We budgeted less, two hundred and thirty less, and we were even less than that. So following the pattern and being conservative, as a financial person, they tell us to be conservative in our recommendations, so I want to budget a hundred less ADA.
So the last three years, have you, your budget on your ADA, has it been the same, lower or higher? This one's a little bit lower, but the last two years, is it also lower?
Prior time, we had fifteen thousand eight hundred, because we had budget experience and we could buy higher, five hundred higher. But we knew the approach is coming with the charter school, so we wanted to be conservative and we went low. So this time, we're gonna be a little bit lower because we didn't even meet the sixteen thousand one hundred, which was already low.
What was your percentage, the high schools, the ADA, high schools, middle?
That we asked them to, that we expect them to, the high school we asked?
This year, this year. How were the high schools together? Ninety-four, ninety-three, ninety-five?
Oh, I don't have that number.
Can you put on the update?
Yeah, we can sweep, yeah.
And see, usually you have higher elementary and then lower the high schools. I just want to see what the ADA was for the entire year.
Yes.
I don't know, Andres, I think sixteen thousand is a little low. And I think you need to challenge out there, your principals, to make sure they get, they get the enrollment up there. So if you go lower, that means, that means lower expectations.
Yeah, that means we're okay with it.
Yeah.
And I feel the same way. You know, sixteen thousand is low.
Yes.
I mean, we were up to eighteen, was it? Eighteen thousand down to sixteen, you know. You what, sixteen hundred, one?
We budgeted for this year sixteen one hundred. For next year, I want to budget a hundred less. But we did not make that budget.
Keep it the same, keep it the same and let's challenge our principals to, to bring up the numbers. I mean, everybody does their part. I mean, that's, how many, how many schools do we have? Is it fifteen?
Twenty-four.
Twenty?
Total, twenty.
Total of twenty schools, so, you know, everybody just works a little harder and gets five, five students back apiece. And I think the big loss is in the elementaries. So that's where we need to concentrate and get the numbers up.
Dr. Canales, in the update, can you put what the last three years of what the ADA, please?
For the last three years?
What has been the budget?
The budget amount, okay, for the last three years.
ADA amount for ADA, sure. And the middle, the middle six weeks, we had over sixteen thousand one hundred. It was at the beginning and at the end that we lost our students.
Yeah.
So during that time, we did have certain six weeks that we had over sixteen thousand one hundred.
Yeah, one, one more.
The second and third six weeks, second was sixteen one seventy-two, the third one sixteen one fifteen.
Correct.
Now, the total went down to sixteen thousand twenty-nine, but in the average, came up to sixteen thousand eighty-six.
Yeah, one, one other thing that we are doing, and Mr. Garcia, Sergio Garcia is helping with leading this, is taking a look at just the whole withdrawal process and what that involves to ensure, you know, that parents understand that if the kids are enrolled here, even if they do move to another school district, as long as they provide the transportation, they are welcomed here. So we're gonna look at that and see if we can refine that as well. In addition to that, we're looking at the two hundred and twenty kids, two hundred and twenty kids and coming up with ideas, whether like I send a letter inviting everybody to come back along.
along with maybe the principals for next year and unveil the goals. So we're brainstorming ways to have kids stay in our system, because as you can see, the numbers of, at least for the enrollment piece, I know this is about attendance piece, we tend to have kids come back or less kids leave at the secondaries. So we're open to other suggestions as well.
One last observation. When I was here, we had standards. Elementary was ninety-seven percent, remember that?
Yes.
Middle schools was ninety-six.
Yes.
High schools ninety-five. That was kind of a standard. Can you let us know what, what it actually was, still is?
It still is. And we do have a report every week.
Let us know what, what it was for the whole year or by six weeks. See if they met the standards.
Anything else?
Okay, for the last part of the superintendent's report, Mr. De La Rosa will present this one. This is on health insurance, our health insurance program.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Canales, this is the standard insurance slide that we present every month. Breaking down claims, prescription drug costs, fixed costs, and then a total this year versus last year. Claims, the district spent eight million six hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred, excuse me, nine hundred and eighty-three hundred versus last year, seven million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and five cents in claims, medical claims. That's a difference of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents. Roughly about an eight percent increase this year over last year. Prescription drugs, last year, we spent two point four, two point five million approximately. This year, two million five hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-two cents. That's a difference of sixty thousand four hundred and two dollars and ninety-three cents. That's approximately a two percent increase over last year, which is, which is, which is good, actually. Fixed costs were about the same. We spent two million one hundred thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. It's a difference of approximately eleven thousand dollars more this year over last year. For a grand total of thirteen million two hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, difference of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars, six hundred and sixteen and eighty-two cents, approximately a five percent increase this year over last year, which is not bad considering trend is usually ten percent a year of medical increase. The next slides, I've kind of changed them up a little bit this year or this month. This will give you a little bit of a better representation as far as our self-funded workers' compensation program. This slide represents how much the district has incurred this year versus last year. As of May thirty-first of two thousand seventeen, we've incurred three hundred and thirty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars in claims versus last year of three fifty-five, four twenty-one. And as you can see, it's broken up between indemnity and medical only. And of course, indemnity consists of temporary income benefits, supplementary, supplementary income benefits, basically dollars that are paid to employees while they're out versus how much the actual Medicare or medical treatment is, is worth. As you can see, it's dropped significantly from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen. This is when the board authorized the creation of our five oh four network in two thousand fifteen. So as you can see, our costs have dropped to approximately fifty percent. So less money budgeted for workers' comp, more money to, to students. This represents how much we've actually paid. So the difference between incurred and paid is when, when somebody files a claim, we have to put so much in reserve to cover the costs of indemnity and medical only. This year, we paid, year-to-date, a hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixteen cents for the sixteen-seventeen plan year. For the fifteen-sixteen plan year, we paid approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. So as you can see, if I'm going to move back to the previous slide, if you look at fifteen-sixteen, we've incurred three, three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars. We paid three hundred and fifteen thousand. So we're pretty much almost in the clear with the fifteen-sixteen plan year. And that is the report. If anybody has any questions?
How much, what, did you have in the budget for the health insurance for this year?
Four, sixteen million.
Sixteen million, so we're, what, two point eight million dollars?
More or less, yes, sir.
Under budget? Now, is there extra cost, or are we going to be coming in, or that's it?
For the health insurance?
Yeah.
Well, we've still got three more months, plus runout.
Okay.
So potentially, we could see a deficit, yes.
Are we going to have enough money to finish it?
Not in the, not what we're budgeting, and we might, we might have to take a million dollars out of general fund to cover the excess. But there's still stop-loss pending, so later on in the year, we'll have a better idea of where we'll be at.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
It just seems that every year, we put more and more money from fund balance to offset it.
Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. I'll start on my left. If anybody has anything to pull. Dr. Rodriguez?
None.
Dr. Rivera?
None.
Sidorov? I have nothing to pull.
Oscar?
No, sir.
Andrew?
None.
Patrick?
No, sir.
Okay. There being no, nothing to pull on the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew. Any discussion?
Can we just acknowledge on P, letter P, all the ones that donated for the fireworks celebration?
Yes.
If we can send out?
Appropriate letters.
We, we sent out a letter thanking for donations.
Okay. And any other donations that were received for that matter?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So there's a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion items. A, interim financial report for month of May two thousand seventeen. Dr. Canales?
For this item, we have Mr. Andres Sanchez.
Yes, members of the board, Dr. Canales. For the general fund, for the nine months ended, May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, the, the budget, as amended to then, through then, is a hundred and sixty-nine million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, which we have received or recorded as accrued, a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and thirty million fifty-seven thousand, which represents seventy-six point eighty-three percent. And on the expenditures, we have budgeted a hundred and seventy-three million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, of which we have spent or encumbered a hundred and twenty million four hundred and ninety-three thousand. That represents sixty-nine point twenty-five percent. Through May thirty-one is nine months, which represents seventy-five percent. So we are slightly over in revenues and below in expenditures. We, we expect that by the end of the year, we may have between three and four million dollars left as savings, because we've been doing some transfers and amendments.
Savings from, from what function?
The largest is function eleven.
Eleven?
Yes, sir. Mostly the function eleven, because the other ones are getting close to our budget.
And when we save money like that, what happens? Do they go back into next year's budget and those particular functions, or does it just go into general fund?
It goes into the fund balance.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir. Usually what we do, the board, working with the board, we assign it for facilities or any of the needs that we have.
Okay, thank you.
How much went back to the fund balance last year, Andres?
Last year, there was a large number.
What was it? I don't remember.
Eight or nine million. I've forgotten. I've used so many numbers, I don't remember the exact amount.
So what do you anticipate this year of?
Between three and four million.
Okay.
And we can provide that information in the board update.
And we'll give you the better number once we finish with the order, make sure that we didn't leave any adjustment that we needed to make, any bill that came in late that we needed to pay, that were accrued or not, we need to take care of that.
But we're looking at three million, three, four million?
But the three and four million, yes.
Good. And these are times and, and times of, of uncertainty with, with the dollars we're going to get, and that's, that's very good. Now, is there any, anything coming up in the legislature where we're going to get more money, less money, or something coming up?
Based on the budget, the state budget was approved, we'll be getting more money, according to the reflections, about two million, two and a half million for next year. And this special legislative section that was approved, and there was an email received today around four o'clock, that said that there's a billion dollars to be considered for different things related to education. Some are charter schools, some are different things, but we might get additional money, but that's not given yet.
Okay, good. Any other comments or questions? This is discussion item, so item B, acknowledgement of Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for April two thousand seventeen, current taxes and delinquent taxes. Dr. Canales?
Hey, this information was received on Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand seventeen, after the May board meeting. So Mr. Andres will present the April report.
On, on, on the April, you do have it on the agenda, the one you don't have is May. Let me, let me go through April, even though it's another month, but we have it on the agenda. For current taxes collected through April thirty, for the current levy was ninety-two point zero five percent, which is point fifty-seven percent higher than the prior year on the current levy. Now, the prior year levies, they collected twenty point seventy-two percent, which is point, was point eighty percent lower than the prior year through April. And both were above our budget, we budgeted twenty percent of the prior years and ninety-one of the current levy. So there's both excess collections of both compared to the budget.
Okay. So the delinquents are just slightly, I mean, probably almost even.
Right.
And
Than the prior year.
And the, the, the recent is?
The current levy was half a percent more.
More. So we're, we're in good shape on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any comments, guys? Item C, acknowledgement of Hidalgo, Hidalgo County Tax Office Collection Report for May two thousand seventeen, current taxes and delinquent taxes.
Yeah, that one, you don't have a copy of it, but let, let me go over the, the amount. This is the one that we just got. On the current, current levy of taxes, through May thirty-one, we collected ninety-two point eighty-eight percent, which is point forty-six percent higher than the prior year. It's about half a percent every month. And on the prior year levies, the collection was twenty-two point forty-three percent, which is point fifty-six lower than the prior year. So that one is almost two percent higher on the current levy compared to budget, and two and a half percent higher than the prior years, based on the amount we, we budgeted.
Good.
Any questions?
Okay. Discussion item also, moving on to item number ten. Discussion and possible action items. Item A, discussion and possible action to submit a national nomination from within our local board to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors or endorse a national nominated individual from another board in our TASB region at the July or August board meetings. Dr. Canales?
Hey, the Board of Trustees is invited to submit a nomination from within our local board to fill a position on the TASB Board of Directors. No action is required at this time, but the board does not wish to nominate someone for our local board. So if no action is taken, an agenda item will be presented either in July or August to endorse a nominated individual from another board in our TASB region who has complied with the requirements. So nominations are open for Region One, Position A, on the TASB Board of Directors. The position is currently held by Sylvia F. Atkinson from Brownsville, and she has indicated that she will not be seeking reelection. This is a one-year term. It begins with the two thousand seventeen Annual TASSA TASB Convention and expires after the convention in two thousand eighteen, if anybody's interested. Now, the process for nominating an individual is three things. And the items are due Friday, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And that's the active member's nomination form and the candidate's willingness to serve. It's like a one-pager. The candidate's biographical sketch, it's also a one-pager with a bio and your picture, if you're interested. And then there's a ten questions and a questionnaire that have to be submitted by that date. So it's open for board discussion.
Dr. Rivera?
No. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the question?
He read his mind.
Okay, well, if anybody's interested, gentlemen? No action?
No action.
No action. Okay, moving forward to item, item B. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for professional errors and omissions insurance proposal, seventeen dash zero six dash fifty-one. Dr. Canales?
Our recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the proposal from AIG, as submitted by Shepherd Walton King Insurance Group. Last year, the district's premium was sixty thousand eight hundred and seventy. This year, the premium is fifty-one thousand four hundred. What this is, it just protects professional employees, board and administration, if any one of us gets sued. And we have Mr. De La Rosa here to answer any questions if you have them.
That's your recommendation?
It's our recommendation.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Patrick Kennedy. Any discussion? All those in favor of, of proceeding with the award for the professional errors and omission insurance proposal seventeen dash zero six dash fifty-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's fleet, general liability, crime and law enforcement insurance with Travelers Public Entity Group through Shepherd Walton King Insurance Agency or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same. Dr. Canales?
Okay, we're recommending that we enter the second year of a three-year renewal option with Travelers Texas Public Entity Group through Shepherd Walton King Insurance Group to provide the fleet, the general liability, the crime and law enforcement insurance for next school year, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. If you look at the premiums for general liability, crime and fleet, the total renewal is about a thousand dollars less than what it was this current year.
The second, second year, right?
It's the second of three, yes.
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Sidorov to go into the second year of our, of our insurance with Shepherd Walton King for the general liability, crime and law enforcement insurance with Travelers Public Entity Group through Shepherd Walton King. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D, discussion and possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's excess workers' compensation insurance with safety national insurance through Shepherd Walton King Insurance Agency or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same. Dr. Canales?
Hey, we're recommending your approval to enter into the second of a third-year renewal option with safety national insurance through Shepherd Walton King Insurance Group to provide excess workers' compensation insurance for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. If you look at the renewals, this one does have an increase of about four thousand dollars due to our increases in payroll. And we have Mr. De La Rosa here to answer questions if you have any.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Oscar.
I mean?
By Andrew and a second by Oscar to renew the district's excess workers' compensation insurance with safety national insurance through Shepherd Walton King Insurance Agency. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to item E. Discussion and possible action for the board to renew the district's agreement with TriStar Risk Management to administer the district's self-funded workers' compensation program for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same. Dr. Canales?
It is our recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve us entering into the second, again, of a three-year renewal option with TriStar Risk Management to administer the district's self-funded workers' compensation, compensation program for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
All in, in motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Sidorov to renew the district's agreement with TriStar Risk Management to administer the district's self-funded workers' compensation program for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Any discussion? How's your service been? Good service? Worked, worked out good, okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the proposals for consultants for special education services, occupational, physical, and speech therapy, RFP number seventeen dash zero six dash forty-four. Dr. Canales?
After consulting with staff today, we're recommending that this is a no-action item due to committee size. And so that would be the superintendent's recommendation. due to committee size, and so that would be the superintendent's recommendation.
No action? Do we table it or just no action?
You can take no action. If the administration's going to come back at a later time with the recommendation, there's no need to...
Yeah, our plan is to come back in July.
Okay.
Okay. And what is it that you're going to do, Doc?
Committee size. We took a look at the committee and wanted to get, in the spirit of teamwork, some practitioners on the committee as part of it.
When you say committee, is it the interview committee or...?
It's a committee that reviews and does a ranking for the proposals that come in.
Okay, I understand.
What kind of services do you expect the consultant to do?
We have Neil Garza, who can answer those questions. We have three different ones on this one. We have the physical therapy, we have the occupational therapy, and then we have the interpretive services.
Okay.
Hey, who do you want to add to this committee?
We want to add committee members to include campus-based staff and some principals, so teachers and principals, in addition to district staff, who looked at it.
Was there a recommendation, Mr. Garza, already? Was there a recommendation already?
Well, at this point, when we discussed it with Dr. Canales, her feeling was we needed additional people on the committee, and I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Are they going to be advising the administration on what to do in these types of services or what exactly does the consultant be doing?
They actually provide direct services to students.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So, we would just get the perspectives of practitioners as well as district staff.
Okay.
All righty.
How big is the committee?
There are three in the original, and we're going to get about maybe three special teachers and about two principal.
And they're all involved in these kinds of services?
Certainly, the teachers are, and the principals do get some feedback if things aren't going quite right.
I think it's important that you involve, you know, quite a number of people on the committee. That way, you can come back to a good decision. That way, they can provide the proper services to our specialists.
Yeah, we think that's a good idea.
And our plans are to get teachers from elementary, at least a teacher from elementary, middle and high, to have representation from all levels.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Item G, discussion and possible action for the board to, one, rank the proposals received for the fencing project at the following schools: Silva Elementary, Gonzalez Elementary, Margot Elementary, North Bridge Elementary, Kate Calvio Complex, Aquatic Center and Kate Early College High School, and, two, approve a vendor for this project as ranked by the board. Item CSP number seventeen zero six dash fifty. Dr. Canales.
Hey, we're recommending that the Board of Trustees rank some proposals received and approve a vendor for the fencing project per the April 11th, 2017 Board Meeting whereby the board retained the authority to rank the proposals. So, we're ready for the ranking.
What meeting was this?
This was the April meeting, sir.
April meeting.
We did receive four competitive sealed proposals. They are, I don't have a copy of the ranking sheet, they aren't noted on the ranking sheet along with the criteria.
Okay, now, we do have the samples outside, is that correct?
We do have the samples outside, if the board wishes to look at them.
I have not seen them.
I haven't seen them either. Where are they? We're outside. Outside the doors.
Right outside the doors.
Right here. Can we go see them?
Now, do we take a recess or just walk outside? Okay, we're going to take a recess. The time is seven oh two, and we're going to take a recess to go and look at the fencing and make our decision. Thank you. Seven twenty, and we're back on open record, and just want to say that we went outside to investigate the fencing samples that were brought to us by several contractors, and I'll entertain a motion or whatever decision the board wants to make on this item in regards to the fencing at several of our schools.
I'll make a motion to table this item and to instruct administration to split the project into two separate projects as equally as possible.
Is that an option, Ivan?
Um, the concern I would have is that the numbers may not hold, because if a vendor was bidding based on so many, so much linear feet, they might be potentially providing it at a reduced rate as it was, so the concern would be, can they hold that rate of material for half the project as opposed to the entire project? That'd be a concern.
Well, I'd still entertain the tabling to give administration a chance to contact the vendors, if that is the best and final...
Well, we can add contacting for that, because the numbers are public. They were, some of them were present when we opened it, so that'll be decided.
Okay, well, then...
But there is a motion, there is a motion to table on the...
I will amend my motion to exclude the instructions to the administration, so just simply to table the item.
Okay. So, I have a motion to table the items, and a second? I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rivera to table the item on the fencing of the projects, fencing projects at Silva Elementary, Gonzalez Elementary, Margot Elementary, North Bridge Elementary, Kate Calvio Complex, Aquatic Center, Kate Early College High School. Any discussion?
So, is it going to be brought up to the next board meeting? Or, Dr. Canales, what are we going to do on that?
Probably be the guidance for the, what do we need to do?
Yeah, we can bring it up to the next board meeting. We have two upcoming board meetings.
Yeah, there's two low bidders that we want for administration to contact and see and ask them if they will entertain taking approximately half, not dollar-wise, but of linear footage wise on the fencing projects, whatever that may be worked out to be. Not dollar-wise, but work-wise, which is linear foot, linear feet of fence.
Are you saying about awarding to two vendors?
Yes. And my thought is, since they're low, one of them is very low, if we get the two low bidders, that we can, if one of them fails, the other one can step in and vice versa. And that would be under their agreement, if they're willing to take half of the project.
But Ivan, I don't think we can do that, can we? Because since we went out for our...
Yeah, I mean, the, if somebody, if the two vendors come back and say, yeah, we're willing to consider holding the price, I mean, that's their prerogative. The concern I have with the initial motion was to dictate to them that it's going to now turn into two different projects. So, if the discussion is, hey, would you consider holding your price for, as we decide whether or not we want to do, create two projects, you could always reject all bids and bid it out separately into two different projects.
Yeah, I think that's a proper way to go, legally, I believe that's the proper way to go.
Yeah, the other way, it's, I mean, you're still, there's balls in the air and just kind of need to figure things out with the vendors.
Because you see the different prices in all four, the final prize, it's totally different from each one, and it's the same linear feet for all four schools.
It's scattered across the board.
Right.
It is.
Well, you want to amend your motion?
He did.
I did. It's been amended. It's been seconded.
Just a table.
It's just a simple table. I think that would allow us, I understand that some of these companies have done different projects for the district, and one of them did, just completed a project in Edinburgh. I think it may, the board could take the time out of leisure to inspect those different construction projects and compare, because what the, I don't think what the public saw is outside, there are eight-foot sections of fence that each company has, has put together, and we've been able to inspect the welding, the type of steel that was involved, and to make sure that the steel is level, things like that, that would go into being important for fencing. And generally, they were all pretty good, but it'd be good to see how they are in different final form.
In architecture.
Yeah, and some of them were actually done here in the district, and I think one of the companies had just completed a project in Edinburgh, and I think the board wants to see how they function in actuality.
Okay.
I think I just want a comparable price where it's all four are within a certain amount of the total figure, because the figure with one of them is here, and then another one is down here, and then two in the middle, so there has to be somewhere, you know, where it's...
Right. Was one bid at half a million dollars and there was one at like one hundred ninety thousand dollars?
Correct.
For the same work.
Correct.
So, it's very interesting why the bids are so scattered.
Could be quality of materials.
Yes, I know.
But one did not provide suppliers.
Okay, so, we have a motion to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for third-party administrative services, proposal seventeen zero five dash thirty-six. Before we get going on this, I'd like to ask our counselor to give us, to answer some questions that we have on what we can proceed to do and what we will not be able to do.
I can answer questions for y'all, legal questions, questions related to legal issues in the closed session.
Okay. So, I'd like to do that. Do we need to make a motion or we just...
Yes. Yes.
Has to be a motion. Okay, so, I'll make a motion to go in with legal counsel to discuss some legal questions on this item.
Second.
Andrew? Okay, we have a second by Andrew. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. We'll go and discuss some items.
You make the motion. You yourself. Okay.
The time is seven twenty-seven, and this board is going into closed session. Time is seven forty-three, and we're back in open session. I'll give a little time for Rosemary to get the camera going, the recorder. I would like to inform everybody that no decisions were made in closed session. I was simply discussing with our legal counsel as to appropriate steps we could take on this item. Okay, so, back to Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for third-party administrative services, proposal seventeen zero five dash thirty-six. Dr. Canales.
Hey, as recommended by SWBC, our hired consultants, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the proposal for Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide third-party administrative services, TPA, utilization review and preferred provider organization, PPO Network. SWBC is here to answer any questions, if there are any.
I move to approve the third-party administrative services proposal submitted by Blue Cross Blue Shield as proposed by the district's insurance consultant and the administration.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Patrick to approve the proposal submitted by Blue Cross Blue Shield as proposed by the district's insurance consultant and the administration. Any discussion?
Yes, I don't like the fact that Blue Cross is dictating who we choose as agents and taking that right away from the board, threatening us by taking the proposal off the table. I've shared my concerns with our new consultants about going this route, about them being audited, and so I'll have to vote against either way, but I just needed to make that clear.
Okay. All those in favor, and we'll show by show of hand, I want to see hands, all those in favor of going with the proposal signify by saying aye and show hands.
Aye.
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 And I'll go ahead to vote for two, that's four votes. Motion passes. Item number eleven, closed meeting to discuss, A, Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code 551.074, number one, employment personnel, employment of personnel. Item two, resignations. Item three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. Item A, deliberation of personnel or organizational charts. B, deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code 551.072. And item C, consultation with attorney regarding a pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement officer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Wesco Independent School District under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. The time is seven forty-seven, and this board is going to close session. At this time, we're back in open session. I'll give Rosemary a few minutes or a few seconds to start the recorder. Let the record reflect that Dr. Rivera left the meeting at eight thirty, and now we'll go to items discussed in closed session. We have Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code 551.074, Employment of Personnel, Dr. Canales.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the resignations and retirements of certified...
Well, we're doing the employment personnel, the number one. So, we're, that's a non-action item.
Oh, sorry.
The item one is a non-action, employment of personnel, and then moving on to item two, resignations, Dr. Canales.
Okay, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the resignations, retirements of certified professional personnel, as discussed in closed session.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Isidoro to approve the resignations as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item three, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. Dr. Canales.
Okay, this is also a non, a no-action item.
It's non-action?
Yep.
Okay. Item A, deliberation of personnel or organizational charts, item A.
It is also a no-action item.
Non-A, it was information only.
Information only.
Item B, deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code 551.072. Dr. Canales.
Again, this says there's no action required, it's a non-action item.
No action, information only. Item C, consultation with attorney regarding, A, pending contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of Wesco Independent School District under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. Dr. Canales.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Mr. Petaz.
Yeah, we're just asking that the board take action to authorize legal counsel and administration to proceed as discussed in the closed session.
So move. Okay, who's going to be the first? Okay, I'll put Isidoro in as first and Patrick as a second, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Patrick to allow legal counsel to proceed as discussed in its closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Let's see. Item number thirteen, adjournment.
So move.
Okay. Time is eight thirty-six, this meeting is over. Thank you.